Call to order at 6:04 PM. I see Mr. Hagerty out there. If you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask our city manager to lead us in the invocation.
So we have Pastor Richardson here tonight to lead us in the prayer.
Pastor Richardson, yes, if Pastor Richardson could do us the honor of the invocation, and Mr. Hagerty will continue to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Invocation first, please. Pastor Richardson?
It's Bishop.
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 Sorry, Bishop.
Please stand, everybody. When I think, first I want to thank Katrina for inviting me to lead in prayer tonight. Thank you for this extension. Sorry to bring the ring with me, but sometime it happens that way. Please bow your head as I lead in, lead our prayer. Thank you, God, for this wonderful city and for this amazing council. We have a heart to serve all of the residents of our city. Continue to give each of them wisdom and courage to lead and power to lead our city into a great future. You have blessed us with wonderful leaders. Continue to guide them as we collectively build together a great city. I pray for each resident of Hawthorne. Grant to us prosperity and peace and love for each other. I pray and ask your protection for our youths. May decisions we make keep them safe and hopeful about the future. Now, God, as I conclude this prayer, grant us all the peace that passes, all understanding. Grant us the hope that keeps us optimistic about our future. And grant us unity that helps us to live, love, and interact with each other. This I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
It's good to see everyone out here on a rainy day, and it's good to see civic participation, especially in these type of circumstances, take place. We're going to go straight into the meeting, and the roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All members present, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so our first item tonight is presentation. Captain Lane, can you please provide and discuss Michael Leon Traffic Safety Program, sir?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I have with me Mark Marcarion from the Hawthorne School District Superintendent also to do some of this presentation.
Brian Marcarion.
Brian, my apologies. During the evening hours of January 8th, 2023, there was a horrific traffic collision between a car and two pedestrians near the intersection of Truro Avenue and El Segundo Boulevard. Tragically, 13-year-old Hawthorne resident Michael Leon did not survive. His father, Carlos Leon, was also injured in the same traffic collision. The investigation would later determine that both Michael and Carlos were legally crossing the street when they were struck by a passing vehicle. Since that time, the Leon family and neighboring advocates have sought answers to make sense of what had occurred. They have requested the city take actions to prevent such tragedy from occurring again in the future.
From 2014 to 2020, Michael was a student of the Hawthorne School District. He attended both Corn Bloom and Ramona Elementary Schools. News of his passing was devastating to the HSD family. The Hawthorne School District Board of Trustees adjourned its meeting on January 11th of 2023 in honor of Michael and in recognition of his connection to the district. I would also like to personally convey my condolences to the Leon family. The safety of our students as they arrive at and leave school on a daily basis is always a concern to us. Our students walk, ride scooters and bicycles or are driven to school each and every day. Just recently, Chief Tomatani and I were discussing crossing guards and the possibility of us securing such support in the future. We are also pleased to once again be able to contract with the department for the services of a school resource officer to help ensure the well-being of our students, staff, and families. We take the safety of our students seriously, and while Michael's death was not school-related, it was an easy decision to support a plan by the Police Department to provide critical education to our students in the areas of pedestrian and bicycle safety.
Following meetings with the Leon family, it became clear that one of the primary concerns was fear over Michael's death not leading to more positive change. With the support of the city manager, Mr. Norris, Chief Tomatani instructed our Traffic Bureau Commander, Lieutenant Joe Romero, and staff to locate or create curriculum that was appropriate for elementary school students. An appropriate curriculum was identified, and planning between the Police Department and the school district began on how to implement this training. Beginning this year, with Dr. Marcarion's support, Hawthorne Police Department will present the Michael Leon Child Safety and Education Program at two schools within Hawthorne at the Hawthorne School District. The first school will be at Corn Bloom, or the first school will be Corn Bloom Elementary and then Ramona, as these two schools Michael attended during his time as a student in the district. Michael's story will also become part of the Hawthorne Police Department's California Office of Traffic Safety Annual Safety Campaign. Each May moving forward from now on, we will be conducting this training and crossing guard training for these students.
The curriculum taught to our students will include safety tips for pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, and scooter users. The Hawthorne School District will select two elementary school sites each year to participate in the program. This will ensure the safety messages reach the greatest number of students possible. The district currently has seven elementary school sites, so in its fourth year, all elementary schools will have been touched by the program. While the education and safety of our students are of vital importance, we also want to ensure that Michael's memory lives on through this effort. It is our collective hope that this program will serve to prevent any future tragedies for other families.
That concludes the presentation. If there's any questions from the council, we have myself and Lieutenant Romero here from the Traffic Bureau.
Through the chair. Quick question. What was the name of the program again?
It's the Michael Leon Child Safety and Education Program. And it's being sponsored through the California Office of Traffic Safety Annual Safety Campaign.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, thank you, Officer and Dr. Marcarion. I want to commend all of you for your, you know, the speedy, the way that you guys took this issue by the horn, right? Because we know safety is one of our priorities. I know, you know, as a school board, former school board member and current council member, we're always talking about traffic, traffic. People, you know, speeding in our streets. So I'm glad to see that we're going to honor Michael Leon forever. He will be living in our hearts, but also on the heart of the other children that's going to learn about safety, about cross, how to cross the street, how to be safe in our street, because we know our public works has been doing diligent work trying to slow down traffic in our streets. So that's the reason that we have created so many speed humps in some of our streets. So, um, so, but it's unfortunately that, you know, Michael have to die, right? So for people to pay attention, because it's not just us politicians and educators, but also our parents and citizens of Hawthorne have to be conscientiously about when they cross the street, because we know some of these drivers have no conscience. They flew over the street and tragedy like this can happen. So again, my hat goes to all of you, you know, from city manager to the public works, to the Police Department and Hawthorne School District to come forward to create this program that I think is going to benefit tremendously our constituency and especially the children. So thank you, and I didn't shake anybody's hands today because I have been suffering with a cold, a sinus headache. So sorry, I didn't go and say hi to everybody, okay? So thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Captain Lane and Superintendent, thank you for the presentation. More importantly, to the family, to the Leon family, my deepest condolences again, and to the classmates and all of those that were affected by this tragic loss. From the moment I met with you guys in the lobby, I said that we would do something, and I have to really, truly give it to our city manager, all of those that expedited this quickly, because we heard your pain and we understood how important this was to you, but not only that, the community. And so I truly look forward to an annual celebration of life in honor of Mr. Michael Leon, a young man that we want to celebrate each year just to, in memory of not only what you collaborated here, Captain Lane, with regards to the safety, annual safety campaign, but I think something that we could just make as a combined community effort to acknowledge every year how we implemented this due to a tragic loss. But truly, thank you for allowing us to do this. It's the least we could do. I do wish that we could do more. However, PSAs, Public Service Announcements, that we could make on Channel 22 out to the community just about being cautious around schools, around our community, I think is very important, too. But thank you to all the city council and everyone that stepped up and did voice their concerns to the departments to make sure that the city of Hawthorne did recognize that we needed to do something. So thank you so much, Captain Lane or Superintendent.
I also want to give my condolences. I did make a donation, and I'm so happy that this program, Captain Lane and Superintendent, I'm so happy that you guys are doing this program. I think it's really important that this program exists for future kids so that they don't walk into this type of situation. And I just thank you all so much for having the compassion in the heart to want to do something for other people and not selfishly just think of yourselves, but to think of the community as a whole and think of other kids. That is so heartfelt, great. I'm so grateful to you all for coming up here, being consistent. I appreciate the video that you guys showed at the last city council meeting. We got an opportunity to see how he was thriving, and it just, it hurts my heart. So thank you so much for coming here, allowing us to do this in celebration of his life. And like Councilwoman Raya said, you know, this is something we want to continue to do to celebrate him so that other kids can understand the importance of this program and that we don't have this ever again. So thank you all, and I appreciate all of the hard work that everyone has done and our team, too. Thank you.
So I just want to give a message of sympathy to the family, the Leon family, friends, family, classmates. Obviously, this is a very painful time, will continue to be. I can only imagine how you feel. I would not even know. I could only imagine. I'm pretty sure everybody up here could say the same. So it hurts us. My brother told me he was driving down Inglewood, and he looked to the right, and there was something happening over there. And later on, I found out that Michael went to heaven at that time. So my deepest sympathy, you have my and the city's 100% commitment that we're going to take action where it is possible to make our children, our adults, our seniors, everyone, safe. We're going to have the best people on our team, our, the higher-ups within the Police Department and in our public works and our public safety area focusing on all these, all the areas in which we can improve safety. This is important. We need to be as proactive. We can't anticipate every single situation. Everybody knows that, right? But we just have to just be as proactive as we can to be able to drive through our streets, see where the blockage of views are, you know, what kind of safety measures, what kind of speed bumps, what kind of different safety measures we could put out there. So you have our 100% commitment that we're going to have the best people working on this, and you also have our commitment that we're going to keep you informed as to what gets done, things that we'll be able to do and also be as transparent as possible where we, there's things that we can't do, right? So we also need to do that, but you'll have our 100% commitment that we're going to give it our full effort in being able to work to prevent this from happening. Thank you, guys. And I'd like to just have a moment of silence in honor of one of God's newest angels up there. May he rest in peace. So we have another item on the agenda, and we have DJ Torado from our Engineering Department. I was going to ask something. Can you at least please tell us what those initials are? Because I'm thinking you're like some club DJ or something.
So my actual spelling is D W E E J A L. It's pronounced Dweejal. So I go by DJ for short.
Okay, for sure. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protemp, councilmembers, and City of Hawthorne residents. My name is DJ Torado, and I'm the Assistant Engineer for the Department of Public Works Engineering Division.
My name is Herman Franco. I'm the engineering technician.
And today we will be doing a presentation on the parking tee program, the red curbs, and our speed hump policy. So this is a division of the neighborhoods in the city of Hawthorne. And currently, everything in green is the locations where we've installed parking tees so far. We're currently doing the northeast Hawthorne residential area, and then we will be continuing on to the Menina Gardens area and then going counterclockwise. So some parking tees pros and cons. So the pros for parking tees, it optimizes the number of on-street parking stalls. It deters residents from reserving parking for family or friends, and it prevents intentional temporary occupying of multiple spaces to prevent others from occupying the space. And it also prevents inefficient use of existing parking capacities. So it prevents people from double parking or blocking residential driveways. One of the cons of the parking tees is that longer vehicles or trucks, such as like a Ford F-150, may have difficulty parking on the street because there are limitations to how long the parking tees can be. So according to the Hawthorne Municipal Code, the council has the authority to establish parking tee markings. They can direct city staff to install parking tee markings in residential neighborhoods. And then also in the Hawthorne Municipal Code, vehicles shall only park within the parking tee limitation markings, and anywhere else outside of those markings, they may be cited. Also in the Hawthorne Municipal Code, commercial vehicles are not allowed to park on streets. They can only be there for about an hour or so to unload or load. If there are any utility companies that have commercial vehicles that need to work, they require an encroachment permit from Public Works. And then oversized vehicles, such as recreational vehicles, are not permitted to be parked on residential streets as well. Per the California Vehicle Code, a person is not allowed to park in front of a public or private driveway, and this is state law. So any vehicles that are parked in front of a public or private driveway are subject to a citation. So if any part of a vehicle blocks the driveway slope and prevents someone from entering or exiting their driveway, it is a citable offense. Depending on if a vehicle is obstructing access to property, it can also be towed as well, according to the California Vehicle Codes. So the standard city criteria for determining whether parking tees can be installed, one of them is on-street parking has to be allowed on the subject location. So while streets, some streets have only parking on one side of the street, so that's where we can mark parking tees. But if the other side is no parking allowed, then we cannot mark parking tees there. So one other criteria is the distance between two driveways has to be a minimum of 36 feet in length, and then each of the parking spaces will be 18 feet long. And then for three or more parking spaces, there should be a minimum of 50 feet in length between driveways. Each of those, each of the ends of the parking spaces shall be 18 feet long, and the center parking space shall be 22 feet long.
Through the chair. Can you repeat those dimension again, please?
So for two parking spaces, the distance between driveways shall be a minimum of 36 feet in length. So each parking space will be 18 feet in length. And then for three or more, it has to be a minimum of 58 feet in length. And then, so the end spaces are 18 feet, and the center space is 22. But because driveways, the distance between driveways do vary in length, the Engineering Division will review the feasibility of the parking spaces on a case-by-case basis. But in no case shall two parking spaces be less than 30 feet total, or 15 and 15. And then three or more has to be, cannot be less than 52 feet long. So 15 for each end space and then 22 for the middle spaces.
Thank you.
Above is a sample diagram of the distance between parking spaces. So 79 feet, 50 feet, and 80 feet. And then this is how we've currently marked. The one in the middle, because it is 50 feet, we did not mark these spaces because it did not meet city criteria. Therefore, we only marked one 15-foot space, and then if two cars can fit behind the 15-foot space, they can park there. And then this is a sample of a currently parking space, parking tee up to the driveway. So you can see that it's up to right before the driveway slope begins. And then same over here, right before the driveway slope begins. And then this is just a sample of cars that are parked properly. So as long as you're in between the two marked spaces, you're good to go. You will not be cited. And then again, this car is parked properly in between the two marked spaces, therefore, they're fine. And they're not, they're not parking, they're not blocking the driveway slope, so they wouldn't be cited for this. So just some feedback from residents. It's been overwhelmingly positive. Residents in other neighborhoods have contacted Public Works asking when parking tees can be installed on their streets as well, because the common feedback that we've received from them is that other cars are not parking properly, and they're also reserving spaces for their family, their friends, their neighbors. The main criticism has been citations, but I would ask you to refer to the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Again, you have to be parked within the marked spaces in order to not be cited. And then we want to continue educating residents on why some spaces are different lanes and why some spaces are not marked. So we do not mark parking spaces when it's only a single space, and then some spaces are not marked because they are under 30 feet, so we do not mark those as well. And then just bringing home the point of the importance of parking tees, we want to maximize on-street parking. We do understand that parking is a big issue in the city, especially with a lot of ADUs that have been built. Parking is a premium space on the street, so by installing these parking tees, we want to maximize the number of cars that can be parked legally on the street.
We're talking about red curbs. So a red curve basically means no stopping, no parking at any time. There are certain locations that are kind of There are certain locations that are kind of mandatory to have red curb in front of a fire hydrant, within 15 feet of the fire hydrant exactly, in front of a public transit bus stops, in front of the USPS mailboxes, the blue mailboxes, the corners of intersections, that's to improve the visibility and when making a turn.
He can the mic too.
Can you repeat the general description of the red curves that we see there? We just couldn't hear you that well, that's all.
Oh, okay. Yes, so red curves basically means no stopping, standing, or parking at any time. And then there are certain locations that are mandatory to have a red curb, for example, in front of a fire hydrant, in front of public transit bus stops, in front of the USPS mailboxes, which are the blue mailboxes, on the corners of intersections, and that's just to improve visibility. Sorry, that's just to improve visibility and to make turns a little easier. So red curves can be installed in between driveways for non-standard parking spaces. For example, 25 feet between driveways, two cars could try to fit, but they end up blocking the entrance of the driveway. So red curb will be placed as you see on the picture, right in front of the driveway. For locations with existing parking tees, red can be painted. Again, as you see in the picture, it will be painted on the flare or the slope of the driveway. Red curves installed by the city are all marked by HPW and the year they were installed. So if you do not see that marking, most likely it was not done by the city, or approved by the city. The other subject I'll be talking about is this policy for speed humps. According to the city, we would take all requests important for speed humps, and the process to obtain a speed hump goes as follows. Speed humps on streets adjacent to schools will be considered for installation upon request from the school district superintendent. So the superintendent has to request it from the city, and only he can. The Police Department, Traffic Bureau, along with the Public Works Department, will then review their request, will make the recommendations to the city manager, and once the city council approves it, then the city will pay for the installation and install it themselves. Speed humps for on streets, sorry, that are not adjacent to schools, they would require a little bit more paperwork. They require a formal request from the resident, sorry, along with a petition with two-thirds of the residents on that block signing it. Each household counts as one signature, regardless of how many people reside in it. Once, sorry. Once the formal request has been submitted and the petition with the two-thirds signature has been submitted, the Engineering Department, yes.
Residents or property owner?
Property owners. My apologies for that. Yes, so if you are renting a home, only the owner of that said home can sign it. And then for apartment buildings, the owner of the property as well. Once the formal request and the petition with the two-thirds signatures on it, the Engineering Division will conduct a study. There are four criterias that must be met for it to proceed. One is traffic volume of the subject street of between 5,000 to 2,000 vehicles per day. So they implement a sensor and they track how many vehicles are on that street or block, and it has to meet within 5,000 to 2,000 vehicles per day. Of those said vehicles, 85% have to be traveling more than seven miles per hour over the speed limit to qualify. The third requirement would be the street is a residential street no, no larger than four feet wide, 40 feet wide, and then the gradient of the street cannot exceed 2.5, which means on hill streets, which you could find on Ramona, wouldn't qualify automatically because it's too steep for the bumps. So once the study has been conducted, if the investigation by the Engineering Division determines that the street meets all of the criteria, then we, the city will, city council will take it upon them to initiate it, and then it's at the cost of the city to install it. If, if this...
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but since I have you right here. Who does the verification of the two-third gathered signatures? How is that verified? Because I know there has to be first name, last name, there needs to be a phone number, an address, an email address, and they have to be property owners. So who's actually doing the verification of either the apartment owner or the property owner to assure that those signatures are in fact valid?
So city staff will verify that information to see if the property owner owns, or if the signature is by the property owner. And then if it is not, then it doesn't count for the two-thirds.
Through the chair, quick question. So just to clarify, so if there is an apartment building, we 200 apartments, right? So they cannot sign the petition, only the owner?
Yeah, so the owner's signature must be on the petition for it to qualify. Yeah, so the residents can speak to the owner to sign the petition, but the owner or the property manager himself or herself must sign the petition in order for it to count.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking, because in the past, some apartment buildings, you know, some of them have signed a petition, or like all of them that live in one apartment building.
Right, so that doesn't count.
All right, thank you.
So in the case of the four criterias not being met, the council can still vote for the speed bump to be placed, but in that scenario, the residents of the block would have to pay for the speed bump.
Can I ask another question to the chair? Talking about, because when you mentioned about Ramona Track, right? Because it was one residence that lived on 135th Street on the bottom towards Hawthorne Boulevard. So what he was telling me that the cars, when they come from, say, from Ramona Street, they go up to that little hill, right, and then they speed up going down, right? It's like they, they just take off, and then they cause a lot of headaches down, down that street. So that street, when it goes from, from, say, from Ramona, it had a little up, and then it goes down. So can they put a speed hump on that when it goes down towards Hawthorne Boulevard?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
The down portion only.
That property in question did not qualify due to the traffic amount on that street, if I recall.
But that doesn't make sense. How could you guys, how could Public Works allow something like that when a car's gathered so much velocity, by the time it's down there, its velocity has increased, and you expect the speed bump to be a safe thing to put down there? That's, I think you're gonna, that would lead to a, an accident. I really think that you should have staff verify that, because I think we don't want to let the residents in that area kind of, I just want you to double-check. Akbar?
Director Akbar.
The increased velocity and having a speed bump there is a problem.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pro Temp.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, I know what exactly you're talking about. Because if we approve it in the flat area, it's more than 600 linear feet. Because when the speed coming, you want to make sure slow down the speed, and after that, we put the speed hump.
A little bit further away.
Yeah, we do the traffic study, we do the volume of the street. After that, we review by our traffic engineer, and if considered is not any dangerous, we put it there.
So Akbar, so then in this case, I'm gonna ask you to review that slope down, because one of the owner have told me that there's been some accidents there, okay? Just, just look into it for me, please.
We do that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think with all fairness, you know, there's also discretion that needs to be used, because everything has to be reviewed. It's not just a given, but thank you, Director Akbar.
Let's just kind of let them continue, because I have a series of questions too, and we might have others on here. And I'm just dying to ask some questions here.
So you'll see here what are the dimensions for a standard speed hump. It measures 12 feet, and then the height can reach up to four, four inches? Oh, for this one's 2.5, but the max it goes up to four. Correction, three inches.
Eight inches?
Three.
Three, three.
Sorry. And then some pros and cons for speed humps. Pros, reduces speeds, reduces accident rates. But of course, with every pros, there's some cons to it. With the slowdown in speed, it tends to slow down emergency vehicles that going, traveling through that street. Noise level increases at the point of the hump, increases air pollution, acceleration, deceleration, and then causes traffic to divert to other streets. So if one block has speed bumps, people tend to avoid that and go to the next block, and just causes traffic on that block, and then repeats, so forth and so forth.
Bad people.
All right, so I have some questions, comments, first of all, in my series of questions here. I mean, you answered the issue about the residents or the property owners. I think we need to make sure that the property owners are the ones that are signing those, okay? Big situation is those apartment buildings that we're talking, those high-density apartment buildings are the main cause of this situation. You got multiple people living, and they have more than one. And now you got, you got people applying to build apartments here in the City of Hawthorne that want to have one and a, one and a quarter parking spaces for the residents. I think that's ludicrous, okay? So I, I mean, I, I really ask my council colleagues to be very cognizant of that, because we exacerbate this whole problem if we approve some of these apartments or high-density residential units where, you know, there's no parking for these people. The Los Angeles metropolitan area is not a transit-oriented basin like New York, like Houston, like San Francisco and other cities are. So let's not pretend that that's the case, and that people are gonna be taking public transport as an alternative to, you know, driving around in cars. We were supposed to be a, a model automobile industry. That's why all those red cars went away. So let's just be conscious of that, please. And the, I, I've had a couple people call me up and tell me, oh, you know, it's not fair that I get a ticket, and I'm always getting cited because my truck doesn't fit inside the lines, right, and my van doesn't fit in line. Park those thing in your driveway. You have a driveway. You want to park all your, your, your sedans in there? You have a choice. I don't feel sorry for those people. There's some rules. We're trying to maximize parking. When you can take that big old truck off of that, you know, two parking spaces, you got a big old van that's taking up half of another parking space, okay, because they're stubborn, they don't want to park inside the driveway, I don't feel sorry for that. You have a choice, and you, you know, you reap what you sow. You're gonna get a ticket. Okay, so I think that's very important. So, commercial vehicles too, we need to make sure that we go around. So I just want to let the residents know that there's people in the community that, many of you have, who have asked for these tee parking, our spaces are very concerned, and we listen to you, and this is what we're trying to do on top of proper urban planning, right? So we invite you, this is, this is proper. If you see somebody who's parked incorrectly, call our parking enforcement team so that they can go cite, or tow if necessary. So I mean, that's what these things are for, to be enforced. Don't feel like hesitant in doing that, okay? Because we have a parking situation that we need to try to deal with and overcome here, okay?
Thank you. To the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want, did you have something? You're absolutely right, Mayor. It's been the council, as Public Works knows, that has been pushing for ideas and assistance in reviewing our parking, and that's why we had a large parking study done, a feasibility study, with regards to how we, you know, how we could better our parking situation, but more importantly, an overview of the whole city. And I know that there's portions right now that have the tee parking that have been installed, and I for one will tell you that it's been very helpful. I've gotten great feedback from individuals, because they got tired of folks coming home and taking three, four parkings for their families. Meanwhile, they're circling around like in and laps 500, looking for parking. So I am very pleased with it, and I look forward to the whole city getting tee parking. But I also know that you, the Public Works Department, realizes that there's oversized vehicles, and you are also accommodating those, because I have driven through the city, and I've seen where there's no tee parking in certain areas where there are, and that's for the purpose of accommodating those oversized vehicles. Thank you for that. I, I want to better understand the speed hump and the speed bump. I know we have a lot of speed hump requests, but when do we implement speed bumps? And I say that because I know that there's different measurements for either one of those. But at one point, we were inundated with requests for speed humps, and we can't speed hump the whole city. Come on, folks. This is, you know, they don't do that in Los Angeles, I'll tell you that right now, 10 million people. And they're, again, we're, we're a better city because of how we are accommodating the community, and I think the community needs to accommodate us. And by doing that is if you have a parking in your home, a parking lot, a garage, like the mayor mentioned, park your vehicles that accommodate those, and those that don't accommodate out, if you could find a tee parking space, right? But I like the fact that we're doing better. I like the fact that you're reporting out to show that, and I want to push to continue. We can't tell people where to move or where to live. All we could do is to help to accommodate and do things better. So we're very fortunate to live off the 105, the 405, the Harbor 110, and have transit-oriented districts, which include train and rail. And so I, I believe strongly, just like folks that want to save gas, parking rides are really super and great. If you have a van pool, those are great. So anything that the community does here to help one another is what we're hoping for, and we'll continue to do PSA, and the mayor's really good about PSAs, you know, and we'll continue to push that, and, and we're also very fortunate to have a TV station to do that. So thank you all at Public Works for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Be quick. Again, I want to say thank you very much for the Public Works and Engineering Department, Akbar DJ, and the young gentleman over there, because I couldn't hear your name. But thank you again for, for, for this, because we've been having a lot of emails, phone calls about this, you know, the tee parking and, and the speed humps. So I'm glad that I asked Vaughn to ask you guys to come and do a presentation for the people to understand. And I'm hoping that this will be in our website, so, so people can look at it and understanding the situation, right? Like Ms. English said, you know, parking's been an issue, and that's what, one of the first thing I did in, in, in 2018 was to address parking issue, and that the tee park was one of them, and also, you know, the idea about smart parking and everything like that. So, so I appreciate that, and for people to understand that, yes, Hawthorne is a very dense populated, you know, neighborhood. You know, because once upon a time, Hawthorne used to be the seventh most dense city in the United States by, by, by the number of square footage, you know, because we only have 5.9 square mile, and then we have close to more than 90,000 residents, right? And, and when you tabulate that every household might have three, four cars nowadays, so it's gonna be a problem. So, so, and that is what we have to live in the community, and then we hope that people will stop driving too much, maybe, you know, join, maybe the city I know is gonna be joining the South Bay Mobility Project, right? That we go encourage more bicycles, more of those other non-four-way, four-wheel vehicles in our streets. So, and then, Ms. English again said, we live in the close four freeways, major freeways, and people avoid the freeway, especially on the rush hour, and they take our streets. And that is where we need to make sure that our residents are safe, and then we, we slow down the drivers. And that is when, you know, believe it or not, you know, I support, you know, some of the speed humps in our, you know, neighborhood streets, not the major, non-major streets, because we know the fire department doesn't like them, and because when they have to go too fast to go to an emergency, they, they don't like the speed hump. So, so that is the kind of thing that we need to inform the citizens of Hawthorne that we're doing our best, right? And this tee parking is to help them, is not to, is not to prejudicate them or not to, because we had the gentleman that come here twice, the two last meetings, you know, complaining, but that is why I said we need to give the public an understanding how our parking situation is working. So thank you very much.
All right, guys.
I'm gonna, real quick. Real quick. I'm going to tattoo 226.51, which says basically in your traffic code violations, "Stop blocking driveways and alleys, stop it, knock it off."
Yeah.
Call your parking enforcement, do your part, report them, get them towed, get them cited, whatever it takes, but stop it. You're not the only one that lives in this world. Thank you.
That's alright. So Akbar and your team, we want to give you a big round of applause. Thank you for the great report. This is awesome. It's working.
Yeah, it is working.
You've got a good spread right there. You're going to be able to knock out a couple of others, okay? Alright guys, we're going to have oral communications. Just kind of, I don't want to, so let's try to have an efficient meeting today. I know we refer to other cities, other cities, well, you know, Inglewood finds itself or they brag about how they can get theirs done in like 30, 45 minutes and other cities try to brag about their stuff, but you know.
We're not Inglewood.
Oh, I kind of knew you would. Well, I'm pretty sure we could just kind of keep our comments as efficient as possible, okay? Including myself, everybody.
Excuse me, what'd you say?
Wait, wait, okay, 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 alright. Wow, don't remember that, I was kidding. No, let's just, let's, a lot of good things to hear and talk about. Oral communications, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The guidelines for oral communications pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bo, the governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Patricia Donaldson?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. This Thursday, we are having our St. Patrick's Day mixer at the Marriott across the street. There'll be food, there'll be door prizes and there'll be a $200 cash prize. We're going to have karaoke night. So if you can all make it, that would be wonderful. And that's going to be this Thursday, which is the day after tomorrow at the Marriott, 5:30 to 7:30. And just two other quick things I'd like to mention is I remember Katrina saying about her gas bill being so high and ours went from my house from $70 to $490. So what we did is my husband decided that we were going to change everything in the house to electric and it only cost us $18,200 to change everything. So now we're all electric because that, that, that's like a thousand times more than, you know, $70. That's insane. And I don't really know when it's going to go down because from what the gentleman said a couple of weeks ago was that we don't get gas from California, it comes from others, from Texas or from Canada. And the other thing, I love that the, the T parking is up for, in front of our, where the Hawthorne Chamber is because before there was like maybe two parking and now we have four parking spaces. The only thing that I would like to mention is I asked one of the ticket people how, because some cars are bigger than others, like you said, mayor, and I asked him how, when you park, sometimes if a car is too large, how do you stop from getting a ticket if you're hanging out? So he told me that it's two and a half inches that you could be out. So that might be something that should be mentioned also, two and a half inches. I, I, they, they left already. Well anyways, I'd like to really know, you know, and, and people should know that because one of the ladies that, that works at Wells Fargo got a ticket because she was a little bit out. So I told her what they said, well, she said, how am I supposed to know I don't live in Hawthorne? So I'm just, just mentioning what, you know, she had said. So thank you very much, I'll see you all this Thursday.
We have a representative from our state senator's office. If you want to say hello and we have another introduction right after you.
Thank you, good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you so much for having me, my name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. I'm District Representative for State Senator Stephen Bradford. I just wanted to come here tonight and share our upcoming event next month, April 1st. It's called Tacos and Taxes. It's going to be a tax, I know, I'm really proud of that name. It's exciting, right? You guys want to go? It's a tax preparation event, it's going to help our community. Everybody in the 35th Senate District is invited and it's going to be a tax preparation event as well as a community resource fair. Again, it's going to be on April 1st, that's a Saturday from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And we have to get everybody to sign up for appointment. So you can't just show up because there, there will be specific slots for tax professionals to sit down with you for 30 to 45 minute time slots. So I encourage everybody that wants to come to, to have an appointment to call 626-545-9351. And that's the number to Golden State Opportunity who we're partnering with and they're the ones that is organizing the tax preparation portion of the event.
Can you give the number again?
Yes, it's 626-545-9351. And the requirement to receive some tax preparation advice would be you have to live in the 35th Senate District. You have to have a individual, individuals with income under $66,000 and you need to call for an appointment. And this is going to be in Gardena located at the Nacogdoa Community Center and that, that address is 1670 West 167th Street. And in, in regards to the resource fair, we'll have entities like Planned Parenthood, WIC, Housing Rights Center, Medi-Cal, CalFresh and Franchise Tax Board all there to help answer any questions and provide any resources. So again, feel free to, to give Golden State Opportunity a call at 626-545-9351 to make an appointment and to get a tax preparation advice and help prepare your taxes. And everyone that is going to an appointment will get free tacos and if you, if we have enough left, we'll also give some to the attendees while supplies last.
To the chair. I just want to let you know that on April 1st, the city of Hawthorne, we're having our Earth Day, Bonnie Stravaganza and Providers Fair also, the same time from 10 to 2. And then also, you know, the Hawthorne School District is having their Stamp Day at the, at the, the middle school, at private middle school. So it's a lot of things happening on the April 1st.
We were trying to actually partner with you all to have the event at Hawthorne, but because of the overlap, we decided to go elsewhere. But yes, very fully aware and we'll try and represent there too.
Just to let you know, if we don't show up in Gardena, it's because we are at Hawthorne Mall Park, okay?
Thank you. And then I will leave these flyers outside and it's English and Spanish on the back as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Jasmine.
Please send our regards to the state senator. Okay, Haley Hutt, I would like to introduce Haley Hutt, who is the new field rep for Assembly Member Tina McKinner. Let's give her a Hawthorne welcome here.
Thank you, good evening, good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, council members and community. My name is Haley, Assembly Member Tina McKinner's field rep, new to the team. I'm here to introduce myself to the community as well as the council members. I will be the rep for this area, so you will be seeing a lot more of me in these meetings and at the community events. Please do not ever hesitate to give a, a, a phone call or email if you need anything from our office. If you need anything from me, you need me to attend anything. I know Ms. Katrina, we just talked about attending an event and I just talked to Ms. Hornbeck this week. So we will definitely be in communication and looking for, Mr. Montero, I did actually speak to you. Yeah, glad you're feeling better, glad to see you out in the community. I want to say thank you for Hawthorne until welcoming me. I got to go to the Jim Thorpe opening yesterday and that was actually phenomenal. So I can't wait to bring my family to the community and enjoy that park. That zip line is amazing and keep up the great work in Hawthorne. Thank you.
Awesome, welcome. All those wishing to address the City Council remaining, please form a line. I want to count, how many people do we have? We only have one person?
Two people.
Three.
Okay. How many do you see? Four? I only see. Alright, go ahead, hi.
Hi, good afternoon. Lili Fernandez is here, a longtime resident from Hawthorne. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Hawthorne Police Department for coming over to North Hawthorne and putting up the trailer. I hope that they continue going into all along our areas there so the residents and the business owners can go ahead and voice out their concerns and whatever they need. It's a great turnout, especially would let them know ahead of time. But besides that, in regards to what we're speaking right now in the parking, I just wanted to know, how can the council direct a message to the homeowners to park in your driveway? Where did public servant just go out the door? I've been here for years with the concern of auto shops, shops, what's it, mechanics, painting, whatever it is. They go ahead and they park their overflow on our residential areas where everybody can park. It is public, however, they are a business and they should not park their cars there. Regardless, half of their cars that they park there, I can guarantee you are not, they don't have tags. They don't have updated tags. They can have a tag there, but it is not updated guaranteed. I've seen it. I don't know if it's, I heard that we were going to get a scan, they were going to scan it. I've been patient, I have not been talking about it, but I'm here today and I'm going to continue talking about this until it gets taken care of because they are the ones that are taking our parking and it's making us feud against each other, the residents. So resident, we're feuding on this and it's not neighborly. So you're telling me to take pub, public transit? Oh, that, I'll take public transit. It's not safe, but I'll take it when you take it. So when I see one of you guys taking public transit, I'll take it with you because I've had things happen to me here in Hawthorne. And I, I, I'm not being angry, I'm just, I've been there. I will never tell my daughter to take MTA from Hawthorne. One Imperial, two 134th, never. Because I've had something happen to me and I don't want nothing to happen to anybody else. So don't tell me to take public transit unless you take it and you tell me that you're safe and everything is good. Thank you very much.
Next person, please.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Lisa Scott and my address is 5403 Marine Avenue. I live in Marine Village. I've been a homeowner in this community for over 20 years and this is a follow-up to addressing the council over two weeks ago. During that time, I addressed the Edison Substation and the re-landscaping project on Marine Avenue. We're still trying, the homeowners are still trying to determine the scope of the project from Edison. We would like to see the actual renderings, the drawings from Edison and also to determine the timeline of the project. Our homeowner association president sent each council member an email, a detailed email with photos and 30 signatures of homeowners in our community and in the Ocean Air Village community. We have over 150 people that live in four bedroom townhomes in this particular community. That email and photos which detailed before and after what the, what I call a park, but what the substation looked like before or after. If, if any of you would take a look at those pictures, you will see a significant difference in how it looks. I want to also say that we did receive a very quick email acknowledgement from Mayor Pro Tem and from Mr. Montero, thank you very much. But I want to keep this top of mind with all of the council members. I would like to know when we would be able to expect a response from you regarding our email of March 7th. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Norris? No, Mr. Norris, do you have the name of the contact person for SEs that are responsible for the development on that site so that they could direct their concerns to those individuals?
Absolutely, our planning director Greg McLean's in the rear there. He has the contact he can share with HOA tonight.
Can you just issue the official response from the city? Just what we know so that they know what the proper channels to address the specific issues?
Would you like me to do that now or Greg?
No, through a formal letter, not, this is, this would be the form.
Okay.
Okay, just so that, because I think that we need to clarify what the proper protocol for this is, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, no, and is it unfortunate that they're not responding promptly? That's, that's sad, but I can't go, I'll talk about it or address it a little bit more in my final comments.
Okay, thank you.
We have your email, okay, right here.
We've all received it.
We all received, okay?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did receive your email.
Yes.
So it's right here. So we, we.
Ma'am, actually you could go talk to our planning, our director right there.
Okay, thank you.
He'll give you kind of what we would be telling you also. Is that okay, Mr. City Manager? Or would you like more?
No, absolutely. I did speak to the planning director regarding this matter. He is prepared to answer questions and he does have information for the residents of Marine Village.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff and neighbors. My name is Kyle Orleman and I have a couple of veterans issues I'd like to bring up for your attention tonight. I'm going to read something that a Vietnam veteran wrote. He said, "Military service to the United States of America requires devotion to duty and a willingness to sacrifice personal comfort and safety. Inherent in military service are stresses, including traumatic stress for some. Recognition of veterans and active duty personnel by fellow Americans is both deserved and appreciated. Currently, approximately only 1% of the United States population serves in the military. This recognition can be therapeutic as many struggle with suicidal thoughts and other effects of extreme stress from exposure to combat. No matter where veterans or, no matter where a service member is stationed, they pledge to defend the Constitution, including making this ultimate sacrifice." So basically what they are asking is, "In keeping with the spirit of Vietnam Veterans of America's very first adopted resolution, never again will one generation of veterans abandon another. The plan is simply to ask at all public events where our flag is looted or our national anthem is sung, for all active service and military veterans to be asked to stand up and be recognized. The announcer would make an announcement to the effect that we honor those who make it possible for us to be here today. Experience has shown that the process of inviting active service and military veterans to stand and be recognized takes approximately five seconds and involves no monetary expense, but it means so much to those who have served our country. This recognition is referred to as the Safe, Save, or Salute Our Armed Forces Every Day program. I'm asking for the City Council to consider implementing this in Hawthorne. Before everybody in the audience and everyone up there stands to pledge, if you would please ask the veterans who are in the audience to stand and be recognized just for that few seconds, it would make them feel far more part of our community and far more welcomed the way that they deserve to be." And then the second thing that I would like to bring up, and by the way, I know we have other office, or office governmental officials here. I have a copy of this, if you would like to bring this up at your higher levels, that would be fabulous. And the last thing that I wanted to say is that in 2017, the Vietnam Veteran, Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act was signed into law which designates March 29th of each year as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. So I would like to suggest that anything that can be done here in the city to recognize our Vietnam veterans, there's, there's a small discrepancy, so I want to point that out. The National Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day is the 29th. In California, it's observed on the 30th. So pick your day, but I would love to see this group do something to recognize the Vietnam veterans who have given so much in this community and their family members as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright. Seeing nobody else, I declare oral communications. Or is there anybody else? I don't see anybody else. Oral communications is closed, sorted. Mr. Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next we have the city clerk's consent calendar. Mr. Mayor, I have three items on the consent calendar. They are items three through five for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for March 14, 2023. Item five, approval of the City Council minutes for the regular meeting of February 14, 2023 for adoption.
I move.
I second.
I'll take, I'll take your motion and I'll second.
Okay.
Please vote. So that's Mayor Pro Tem making the motion, I second.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
We have a bid, can you please read that?
Yes, next we have a bid opening. Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Hawthorne Boulevard Mobility Improvement Project, Phase Two, City Project Number 23-01. Public Works Department Declaration of Public Public Works Department Declaration of Publication File. There were, there were a total of five bids received. All were accompanied by bidder's bond and the prices are as follows. Comet Electric Inc., two million, five hundred and thirty thousand, eighty dollars, no sense. DBX Inc., three million, two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and no sense. Cal Pro Max Engineering Inc., two million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eighty-seven, two million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand and five hundred dollars, no sense. Belkor Electnor Group, two million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and no sense. Pulp Inc., DBA Excel Paving, three million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and no sense.
I move.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, please vote.
Can we just make mention for the record that the motion that the bid be referred to staff for study and recommendation?
Of course.
Because it wasn't set, that's all, go ahead.
I think, okay, that's, the motion will be referred to study, will be referred to study for, will be referred to staff for study and recommendation.
With the specific note that it be, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Go ahead. The bids will be referred to staff for study and recommendation.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think you have to vote.
I'm sorry, it's my, it's my city clerk days.
I know.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, thank you.
That was like about, how many years was that?
Oh, man, don't make me feel old.
I remember. Oh, wow, we're done, reading's done. All right, item seven.
Those were fun.
Ordinance.
Thank you, next we have an ordinance, item number seven. This is ordinance number two two, two two three eight, second reading. Okay, this is a long one, so. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, repealing chapter two point one four, beautification commission, amending sections two point one seven, point zero four zero, terms of office, and two point one seven, point zero five zero, organization of chapter two point one seven, youth commission, adding section two point one eight, point zero four zero, terms of office, and amending sections two point one eight, point zero seven zero, chairperson of chapter two point one eight, civil service commission, amending sections two point one nine, point zero two zero, members, and two point one nine, point zero three zero, organization of chapter two point one nine, veterans affair commission, amending sections two point two zero, point zero four zero, terms of office, and two point two zero, point zero five zero, organization of chapter two point two zero, senior citizens commission, amending sections two point two two, point zero four zero, terms of office, and two point two two, point zero five zero, organization of chapter two point two two, park recreation and fine arts commission, amending section two point two eight, point zero five zero, chairperson, and adding section two point two eight, point zero nine zero, terms of office to chapter two point two eight, planning commission of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, and making a finding of exemption and compliance with CEQA in connection therewith for adoption.
Mr. City Manager, synopsis, please, on this. Mr. City Attorney.
So basically, this is a ordinance, I know it's very lengthy, but it's, it's actually a repetition of the same structure that the council directed myself to come up with. And it's basically sets a term limit of four years for each of the commissioners. And the, those already served years count to the term limits. And then they can reapply, the termed-out commissioners may reapply after they sit out for ninety days. And also that the, I remember it was Councilman Montero directed that the ordinance include rotation of the chair and the vice chair position for each of the commissions. So it seems lengthy, but it's, it's the same application of the, the laws or the ordinance for each of the commissions. As you know, before, we had a commission with term limits for four years for certain commissions and then there was a resolution that was passed that made it eight years for some of the other commissions. And you, you can't change the ordinance of the resolution, so this clarifies all that. And that's basically it, I could answer any specific questions you may have.
Is this proactive or retroactive?
It's, the effect is retroactive, but you got to remember that pursuant to our code and the government code, the council by majority quorum can vote to, to dismiss a particular commissioner without any cause. So basically, based on those reasons, that it, the effect is retroactive.
Okay, through the chair, go ahead.
I'd like to propose a, a change under the terms of office section, under all the commissions. If you can read, let me see. After it says, "The members of the commission are qualified electors of the city shall not serve more than one term of four consecutive years. After that, strike the remainder of the sentence and put, unless there is no application received by the city clerk from a qualified elector."
What does that do? What's the purpose of that?
So that means that a, a person can continue to serve after four years unless there is an application in by a qualified elector. Then the process of dismissing them because they've gone over their term would initiate at that point.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
It's almost the same language that we tried to, to put in this ordinance about the, if the commission has to have a quorum, right? There was something there that we talked about, the commissions could not just, for example, let me give you an example, if one, one of the commissions, all of them have served four years, they cannot just be gone and then there is no commission.
Right.
So, so can we, somewhere in here, they say that the commission have to maintain a quorum?
We could add that, the way it was phrased before this request were changed by Councilwoman Patterson is that, or until their successors, successors are appointed and qualified. So you wouldn't have an issue with quorum because you, they were, each of the termed-out commissioners would serve until a,
Every vote.
Until a vote is taken and they, they're replaced. But however, if you change this to the way Councilmember Patterson has mentioned, by having, by what Councilmember Patterson is saying is that, once there is an application, if there is no application, then, then they,
They'll continue to.
They'll continue. So the fact that there's an application.
You can add afterwards, there shall not be any dismissal if it will create a lack of a quorum.
Okay, so I will add that language to, unless no application is registered by,
But I thought that was already in there.
And,
It's not clear.
And there is a quorum.
Do you require a motion to be made? Patterson, Councilwoman.
I'll, I'll phrase it, you know, I'll reword it and I'll bring it back with the changes that you're requesting, if we have the support of the, the majority of the council at this point, to these changes.
Councilwoman Patterson, you want to make a motion?
So, yeah, I'm going to make these, those adjustments and bring it back for, I guess, a new second reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Wouldn't you have to have a whole initial reading?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't you have to have a whole initial reading?
No, this will be, so by getting these changes made, this will be a introduction. It's a reintroduction, so we'll come back for an adoption at the next meeting with these changes.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
So the rule, after the reading of the city clerk that read the initial ordinance, there wasn't a motion or a second, you asked for clarification from the city attorney. Do we need to make a motion now for your reading? Because all we did right now at this point was to add.
That's right, so if the change is being made, is, in other words, by the changes that's being requested by Commissioner Patterson, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Patterson, is significant enough, it's not just a topical graphical correction, that it becomes an introduction and then it'll be brought back for a motion for adoption.
No, I understand.
I don't think the clerk has to reread it.
I'm, I'm, okay, okay, so we're, we're striking out, what, we're striking out what was read earlier by the city clerk?
Uh, yes, but we don't right now know whether there's a quorum support for what Councilman Patterson, the correction that Councilman Patterson wants to do.
So you're bringing it back, but it's been, it's been a motion and approved to bring the, the, the language change?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. City Attorney, isn't it clear as is without having made that change? Or do you agree that it needs to be changed?
No, I'm not, that's not, any ordinance can be changed by a council member by a majority quorum. So I'm not, I'm not the person.
What do you have right now on the books when it comes to the person serving? At what point do they exit the council?
After they, they serve four years. Now, after they serve four years, they will be termed out, the commissioners will be termed out. But as, as, as Councilman Patterson have stated, the changes that he wanted is that they would continue to serve after four years unless there is no application that's received by the qualified electors and that there is no quorum. So if there is application received and there is sufficient quorum, then the termed-out commissioner would have to no longer serve as a commissioner.
But the effectiveness of their expiration is at those four years?
After four years, unless there is no application to make a quorum. So I'll, I'll reword that in a way, but I need to know whether.
Vargas.
We don't even need to vote on it, we could just do it by, do we have to vote on that change?
Yes, because we don't know whether we have majority wants to make these changes.
We could do, we don't have to have a vote for that, that's could be a roll call.
I call for a vote.
Mr. City Attorney.
I call for a vote.
Is a vote proper? Can't you just do it, just go ahead?
Well, if you have majority of the vote to support this change.
You can do it early.
But Mayor.
I'm sorry?
You could do it early, just go ahead.
He just made a motion, I second, so it requires a vote.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, and this is for the amended ordinance.
For the changes in the ordinance.
Reintroduce and then come back for a second reading.
Yes.
Okay.
To, to add these changes to the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, the vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, please, next item.
Okay, next we have general matters, item number eight. Report on the Hawthorne Business Connect HBC Timeline Update. Recommend the motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file the report.
To the chair, I like the pool list.
For discussion?
For discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Have you already read it, sir? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Ms.
Thank you. Oh, where she, you come in to give the citation? Oh, I, I read what the, the timeline on this. And this is amazing, and I just want to say to staff that I appreciate this and I look forward to leading this along with Councilwoman English. I'm really excited about this and I can't wait for us to implement it and get it started. And if you are out there, businesses, be ready to come and flourish your business with the city of Hawthorne, because we are going to do great things. Our team have put together an amazing timeline for you guys to get the recognition, to make sure that everybody in the city knows your business and the people that are passing through will know your business. So thank you to our staff for putting together this amazing timeline for Business Connect. Thank you, that's it.
Motion?
I move.
There's a.
Second.
Second, okay. A motion by Councilwoman Montero, second by Councilwoman Manning, please vote.
Mayor, did you vote?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not answered, okay, thank you. The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes, this is for a receive and file, thank you.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, next we have the city manager's consent calendar. And that is items nine through, number nine through thirteen on the city manager's consent calendar. Okay, item number nine, amendment to measure our funding agreement, number MR three one two point six nine. Amendment number one, between the city of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design highway improvements to Osagunda Boulevard from Los Yenega Boulevard to Ocean Gate Avenue. Item number ten, amendment to measure our funding agreement, MR point three one two point eight one. Amendment number one, between the city of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design highway improvements to one hundred and twenty street from Crenshaw Boulevard to Felton Avenue. Item number eleven, approval of HVAC duct cleaning services. Item number twelve, consulting services for development and implementation of a relocation plan for rental rehabilitation project using federal home investment partnerships, home funds. Item number thirteen, progress payment number four and final acceptance in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-three and sixty, sixty-three cents due to Martinez Landscape Inc. of Silmar, California, for Holly, for Holly Glen Park and Jim Thorpe, Jim Thorpe Park Improvement Project, project number twenty-two dash zero three. Okay, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items nine through thirteen?
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm going to go ahead again, city attorney, recuse myself from item number twelve. Um, there's a perception there just because of the relationship with my employer, the city of Los Angeles, so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from that item and leave, and leave the room. Excuse me?
Can we just vote on all but twelve?
Through the chair, I have a quick comment.
Yeah, we could, we could just vote for all, I'm going to recuse myself on twelve, so, you want to do all first? Do all first?
We're going to do, any other recusals? I have a quick question I need to ask.
I have a quick question too, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you go ahead and do yours.
So item number nine, that the major our funds, so, so one, this also include that sound burial, you know, the, the wall that's going to be on, you know, four or five toes?
For clarity, I'm going to call our, uh, public works director.
Yeah, let him do that.
The question is the sound wall that, uh, project for twenty-three, twenty-four, Holly Glen area, four oh five freeway, is this measure our money?
Is this is.
No, it is major our money, it's, it's going to do by carter and not by city.
No, by city, by the, by this major our.
By major our grant, yes.
Right, thank you.
Majority coming from there.
Thank you. That's it.
I make a motion on all items except, what, twelve was it?
Twelve.
Except twelve.
And I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Please vote.
Thank you, a motion and a second to approve items number nine through thirteen with Councilmember Reyes English recusing on number twelve.
Just right outside of the.
Yeah.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes, with Councilmember Reyes English recusing herself on number twelve.
I make a motion on item twelve?
Second.
Please vote, reset and vote, please.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes on item number twelve with Councilmember Reyes English absent.
Can you call her back in, please, sir?
Yes.
Call her back in, you can call her back in.
Councilmember Reyes English?
It wasn't going to be that long, okay. Next, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have items fourteen through seventeen on the city, city attorney's consent calendar. Please proceed by introducing each item into the record on his behalf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, city attorney's consent calendar, item number fourteen, deny claim for damages submitted by Michael Ship. Item fifteen, approved settlement of Jose Samora v. City of Hawthorne. Item sixteen, replacing the delegate and alternate to independent cities risk management authority, ICRMA, with the city attorney staff. Item seventeen, deny claim for damages submitted by Persona three one zero. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items fourteen through seventeen?
Motion, I make, I make a motion, go ahead, please vote.
Thank you. The vote, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, thank you.
Motion by Vargas and second by Montero.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the city council's discussion action items, council member. Okay. Next, we have the City Council's Discussion Action Items. Councilmember Manning, twenty-twenty-three Mother's Day Event Funding. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the Mother's Day event, um I was asking or requesting uh funds of a thousand dollars from our general fund. Um, to cover cost of um our Mother's Day event for all of our uh residents for the City of Hawthorne for Mother's Day. I make a motion?
Well, actually, no, no, I I will need to support that. I support it. But do we even have to vote for the specific money if if we undertake this as a city-sponsored event? Is it a city-sponsored event?
Yes, it is for all the mothers of uh City of Hawthorne. Councilwoman English and I are hosting uh this event for the city.
I I think I think because of the fact that it it's requested through the general fund, that's why it would require a majority vote of the council. I don't think necessarily a thousand dollars is gonna break us. However, I'm also making efforts to um do some other um fundraising efforts on my own, so. Um, I would like to see that happen.
If I may, uh let me double check to make sure because this is not one of the events listed in the city-sponsored event, which which overrides that.
We just put it on.
So there's a specific, I I know Councilwoman Manning, you I know you're new at this, so you there in the previous, there is a specific list of city-sponsored event where the city can contribute some money to it. So um let me look into a little further and if we need to bring it back as a possible addition to a city-sponsored event, if this is gonna be an annual event, maybe that's a better way to go.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so maybe um give me a little time to let me look into it and I'll come back with you.
Mr. City Attorney?
What can we just add it now?
If uh.
Let's be on the agenda to add it.
Can can both the adding of the event to the list and the actual uh well, that in itself will uh will incorporate the request, right?
Yes, that that should be fine, so I have to bring another resolution for that because I believe this this subsidy-sponsored event is pursuant to a resolution, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
For your event?
I support the event.
Uh, the event is May the sixth at eleven AM at the Memorial Center.
I I I think just for clarification, she's she has three events that she's doing, so she's most likely gonna add all of them to her uh city-sponsored events.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, um I I would need to know each of the events.
Okay, so women uh Women's Day every year, we're gonna celebrate Women's Day, Women's Month. Um, Women's History Month. And then uh what Mother's Day every year. And then we're gonna have um a Health Resource Fair every year.
Through the through the chair.
Go ahead.
I support all the events, but the the Providers Fair is almost like a health fair, right? Because that is why we bring everything uh there. We invite everybody, clinics, I'm inviting the Lions Club uh iMobile to do eye exam and hearing testing. So that Providers Fair usually, that's that's the city, basically, to bring all the resources to the community. So I think it's going to be kind of almost like a redo.
So is this specifically geared towards women?
Well, it's getting towards everybody. You cannot discriminate.
Well, when you have, yeah, I'm not discriminating, but if you have uh an event that focus on specific issues, health issues that um deal with women issues, that is not discriminating.
Okay, so then I would suggest, so if you wanna do the Women's Month event, so that may be the health, that health fair will be on that Women's Month, so that maybe you can combine.
Well, that's it. That's too much to do in one month.
Events together.
It's her event. Let her do it. She's the council member.
I'm just giving ideas because we don't wanna, because you see, we don't wanna overwhelm the staff uh with all these events, months after months, months after now, because that is a lot of events coming. So I would say just look into maybe the the Women's Month, maybe to celebrate the Women's Month, then you can do the Health Fair and celebration the same day.
Well, no, because it would be too much and um I'm not trying to overwhelm staff. I actually plan to do the work. Councilwoman Reyes will do the work, so we're not gonna overwhelm staff by doing this. And.
Councilmember.
Yeah.
Could you share, like, when did you have these three different events? Maybe that'll give us a little bit of clarity.
So.
Spread out.
We can see where they fit in here.
So for for Mother's Day, we're having two, I mean, for the month of um Women's Month, it's in the month of March. Mother's Day is in the month of May, and then in the month of June, we're planning to do the Health Fair for women.
See, see, hold on, hold on one second.
Miss Montero.
Hold on one second.
One at a time, guys. Let's just.
So what what I'm saying is, see, if we're going, if we're going March, uh, okay, we got all a lot of events happening, right? And especially April, and then May, and then June, you know, the May is having something, and then we got the the Holly Park uh Juneteenth Celebration. So I'm looking a lot, the staff basically is gonna be working every Saturday uh for all these events. That's what I'm do- I I I'm concerned about this, the staff that's gonna be working event after event, I mean, every Saturday instead of us looking to combine some of these events to to not to eliminate some of the expenses. You know, because Saturdays, we have to pay overtime. So so that is something that I'm worried about. All these events, like, it's like we're gonna be, every Saturday, we have an event. That's my concern. I I support all your all your events, even if if Councilwoman English and you is gonna put time for to prepare it, but staff have to be down Saturdays.
Uh, no, that is not necessarily true. We have, we have, we do have um people that are willing to volunteer to come and support our event. Now, if there are some things that we can't control, like uh maybe we may need staff to come and set up the speakers or something like that, but we have a total of ninety thousand residents in our city. And so when we talk about events, we're not overwhelming them with having additional event to focus on women's health.
No, not the people. I'm saying the staff, but I agree about women's health.
I understand, but the goal is not to, the goal is not to overwhelm staff. And what I'm saying is that we have the ability, myself and uh Councilwoman English have the ability to get people to volunteer to make sure that we're not overwhelming staff with the request of this particular event.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, to the chair. Councilmember Patterson.
Question, when is the Research Provider Fair that you were referring to? Got it. And you're and the Women's um Health Fair you're looking to do is in June?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. So one thing I I will say from witnessing Councilmember um Manning put together events before she was a councilmember, she put together a lot of spectacular events without staff's use. So I would imagine she still has that ability to do so and probably would just be asking for a couple of dollars from uh the general fund.
I support her event if if that's what I'm saying. No, I think he's finished. I support her event. I'm not, I'm not saying no, but I'm just saying.
Let him finish. Like, we just, he'll get to respond.
He was finished.
No, he's not. Not necessarily, but um the the
I I I support all three of them. I won't, I won't continue.
Oh, so um I think it's.
At least adding them to the to the list of events.
Bring it back to council.
The reality, guys, is uh um I know that I have a list of events I'd like to do, you know? Let's add them all, right? Also, I got like ten.
No, I should still, I'm sorry, I did have a question, though, right?
Well, let me finish and then you go back. Listen, I'm on my time too. Um, but uh I I've I've been a supporter of having many small events here in the city. Have giving people things to do. I mean, Mr. City Manager, haven't I told you that? Does it have to be a big production? It doesn't always have to be a big production. I remember when we had the Taste of Hawthorne. That took forever and a million people to to organize and what, we didn't have it the next year because it's too much. Small events add up to a lot of options for the people to do. So that being said, I know the desire is to have it every year, but Councilwoman Manning and Mayor Pro Tem will see how it went this first year, and it's, you know what, we could probably do it as standalone events, or then the following events, we can combine maybe this one with this one, et cetera, or combine this with this or all this other stuff. So the first time is uh where you get to discover what it's going to be. But of course, I know your confidence is gonna be successful, I know, but I'm just putting it out there that it's just worth trying in the beginning and see where it leads. Because if I have an event and it's personally and it's not successful, why am I gonna try to go through the whole motions the next year? So um, hey, we're gonna have a full calendar, and I think we're gonna be a heck of a lot more involved than other cities, so I think it's a great thing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a question. So um, I know having an event that's on this calendar or sponsored by the city doesn't necessarily mean that the ci- staff is contributing any time, doesn't necessarily mean that the city is cutting any checks. That, is that accurate?
There's a cost for everything. So to open the building, there's a cost. To have staff, there's there's a cost. To have someone on call if there's any problems, a cost. So anytime we're operating the city, there's a cost for that. Now, can we limit the cost? Yes.
And then, uh, I wanna say cost, um, 'cause I know with some events, like um, some events that Mr. Montero put together, he raises some money to put those events together. So I guess does it ever happen that there's a city-sponsored event where there's no net cost to the city that the sponsoring people cover all the cost?
Uh, in my time as City Manager and Committee Service Director, the events have been covered through fundraising but not staff.
Got it. Um, do we have a amount of money that we are automatically allowed to be spent by there being an event on the calendar? Not on the calendar, on the the list of city-approved events. Does that come with a certain amount of allowance?
No allowance. It needs to be voted on by council. So as uh Mr. Kim mentioned, we have a list of uh sponsored events. It comes to the council for direction and vote.
Well, once it's added on to that list, though, does each event come with a certain amount of money that's allocated towards it? Whether it be staff time or something like that, or is this by event-by-event basis of how much?
By event basis, but we don't have a set amount, so some events, as Mr. Mayor said, that don't happen the following year, so there's no need for funding. So each event that wants funding, uh council asks for direction from staff to give funding for that event.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
So maybe Vaughn, uh since uh I know uh Felice, right, uh and you are working on the budget for next year, that's gonna start July first, uh maybe somebody to think about because of all these events, or maybe something that we need to put on the on the budget. So for us to review, so so we'll say, okay, there is such an event that may cost us this much money because of, like you said, you know, there is some cost for any event, so maybe we can talk about it during the budget review that we're gonna have, like budget workshop for for twenty-three, twenty-four. So maybe that's something that to put on that budget.
Absolutely noted.
So guys, I think we just gotta celebrate the fact that we're having more and more events, giving people an option to to attend. Small events is what I say, small events. It'll give everybody a good opportunity to participate in different things that, not everybody's gonna wanna go to the, well, to an event that I have because it just doesn't appeal to them. But they might see something else that one of my other councilmember colleagues, my wonderful uh partner up here, Mayor Pro Tem English, who I might have an event and.
I was gonna say, like, your one-on-one basketball?
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's the only one I know of. Anyway.
You know what?
What the heck are you trying to do right here?
You know what? You know what?
Again this year, just because of that.
I think it, I think it's great that all of these ideas are are are, you know, have been part of the city's um, you know, growth, right? Everyone has had events and have had functions and whatnot. Uh Katrina's uh Councilmember Manning is new to the council, so I could see her excitement. I could see her energy. I could see what she wants to do uh with regards to events, and that's something that she does every day at her job, so I I get it. Um, I am willing to support however I can, and if uh, you know, the general fund is such an issue, uh I'll I'll assure that we raise the thousand, if not more, for the event that you need. And then um put those items on the agenda for the next council meeting so we could add them to our city events. And then we'll make efforts to assure that we get funding for those, even if it's not through the city. However, uh stipends, everyone has stipends. If you're wanting to volunteer your stipend, that that could be helpful, too. Uh, I know that I directed the council uh City Manager to provide a a two-fifty stipend for this uh twenty-fifth women's event that you have coming up. It'd be great to have other councilmembers support.
I had to give my check.
I saw that.
Thank you.
And um help in those efforts, so um, yeah, I think it's it's a good thing. I'll help you plan an event, Mayor, if you wanna do an event. Let's do a mayor event.
Heck, yeah, let's do it.
Let's do an event.
So for clarification, uh Councilwoman Manning, um first was Mother's Day event.
Second was. First was the women because it's March. March, March is Women's Month, and then it's May, Mother's Day, and then in June, some sometimes gonna be a Health Fair for women.
Okay, so I'll connect with you and get a clarification of exact title and the dates and and whatnot.
So as long as we proceed of being um, you know, you know, ambitious, um yet responsible when it comes to the monetary aspect, I think that's uh, that's kind of a good thing, just so we can have our money spread a a lot through a many events, right? Okay, let's move on. Thank you, guys. Great ideas.
She's got another item.
Thank you.
From everybody here. We have elected officials' reports, recommendations. We'll start off with our.
Oh.
She's got one more.
Did I miss that one? Oh, I am so sorry. I thought that was, yeah, because you think you, the women's this, women's that, I saw the. Commission, go ahead.
Yes, so um a couple of council meetings before um we had talked about uh establishing a Women's Commission, and so I'm bringing that back um to request that we begin the process of establishing a Women's Commission.
Is it a commission or committee? Because I'm getting confused.
Right now, it's a committee. It's an ad hoc committee because that was um the suggestion of our City Attorney that we start off with an ad hoc committee, but I wanted to make it official Women's Commission.
So you're gonna add that on the next council?
To the chair? To the chair, I have a question.
Do we have a a staff member uh in mind that'll be a um sit in on that commission?
Are we gonna have the co-?
I think, I think what she said was, we we had an initial, uh, we have an initial ad hoc committee, Women's Committee. And that's what we're gonna be discussing on the twenty-fifth at the Women's Event at the Memorial Center at eleven-thirty AM uh with guest speakers. And then from what I understand here, that ultimately the plan is to establish a Women's Commission.
Right.
And I, and usually, and when we have a commission meetings, there's a staff member that staffs that.
A regular commission like any other commission, which would be applicants that would apply to be part of the commission, right?
Yeah, so I was curious, do we have a staff member in mind that will, that would staff that commission?
Well, so the. What do you mean by that? I I'm.
My, usually when there's a commission meeting, there's a staff member that.
But it is a department.
I don't think all the commissions have a staff member. For instance, uh Veterans Affairs Commission, I don't think has a staff.
You do. All commissions have a staff member that oversees the commission.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like.
We'll appoint, we'll, we'll appoint someone. We'll appoint someone.
I'm just curious if there's somebody in mind.
We'll talk about it and then we'll.
Through the, through the chair. Uh, real quick question. So, look, this is the the establishment of Women's Commission, you're right. So the ad hoc commi- commi- committee needs to be set first and see how that goes and see uh what the response is, and then the Women's Commission would follow after that.
May I?
It's like a, it's an evolution.
Through the chair. Now, you. I believe, you know, the, we have to give the City Attorney Kim time to come up with the bylaws and how that commission is going to function.
So he have to establish. Okay, so you establish him because I have the bylaws, but.
If you have the bylaws, I I would, you know, then I could go through that and implement that into the Women's Commission. So the committee, the ad hoc committee that I was gonna recommend, the ad hoc committee that exists right now should work on the bylaws and the goals of the commissions, so that that could be implemented. Yeah, okay, then.
And what they're charged, um.
Yeah.
What they're charged with, their their scope of work.
To to the chair, and then the uh Robert Kim has to put that in an ordinance form and bring it to us to vote.
Okay.
Good. Alright, sounds great.
Thank you.
Great idea. Uh, uh, Ms. Treasure?
We're gonna take care of all of you.
Out of what?
Where the Women's Commission is gonna take care of all of you.
You guys are the mothers, so you have to take care of us.
Well, it depends who has a feminine side up here.
No, I look for, I look forward to this commission so that they can plan the Mother's Day event, the Women's Event, and at at Health Fair. That's what they're gonna be charging to do.
I have four sisters, so I know that.
Let's not say, we certainly sound silly up here, including myself. Ms. Treasure?
Thank you. I first wanna take this time to speak on the uh banking industry. As you may know, there were a failure to large banking institutions this past week. I spoke with uh Michael Brody, our lead government. I spoke with uh Michael Brody, our lead government uh relationship manager over at Bank of the West, and he assured me that the city funds were not affected. Um, of course, you all know, I don't, not sure if you know, that all our funds are collateralized and protected against those types of situations. Uh LEAF was also not affected by the banking collapse as well. State Treasurer Fiona Ma issued a press release on the thirteenth stating that LEAF had no exposure and is secure and safe. I have a copy of that press release as well. Um, I spoke with Peter Yanez over at Multibank Securities and he gave me a quick uh tutorial training on executing trades. We had a C D that matured on January seventeenth that had a one point nine interest rate. I rolled that over into a C D with a five percent rate set to mature in twenty twenty-eight. Um Felice over in the finance department was made well aware. I attended a conference last week. Um, I attended five uh bond bootcamp sessions. Uh topics of discussion included investment policy, overview of financial markets, economic indicators, Federal Reserve, uh response to economic downturns, investment plan versus investment policies, uh portfolio strategies, market vola- volatility in the upcoming year, understanding risk, uh optionality, prudence, and investment reporting. The uh second half of the conference uh was for larger municipalities on the state and national level along with corporate entities. Um, I learnt, you know, a lot about in speaking with other municipalities, most of which were not local. But they do tend to invest more aggressively. They have funds to invest and invest more in treasury bonds and CDs. Uh naturally, aggressive investing poses more risk and greater reward, but also requires more monitoring. I look forward in the future to utilizing some of these investment strategies and carefully reviewing them with the assistance of the finance director here at the city. I also look forward to the support of councils and uh city council and the constituent support as we move forward um into more progressive financial strategies in the upcoming year. Um, I would like to point out, I have served in my seat for ninety days. Um, yes, I am glad. And um I, you know, I wanna take into consideration, you know, any investments or any, you know, anything that I feel like you know, financially is gonna be for the betterment and the financial investment um investment advancement in the city's best interests. Uh, the finance director, I spoke, you know, we emailed today and uh she did forward me the current investment policy to review. Uh, she wasn't aware, and I'm not sure if anyone knows that if the investment policy is certified by outside agency or held in compliance with our own legal department.
It's not certified by outside agency, no.
No, okay. Um, oh, um, earlier this month on the fourth, we uh attended the Holly Park Little League opening day. I'd like to thank the Little League Board and all the families for a great time. Best of luck to Holly Park Little League on their upcoming season. Uh, special thank you to the Rams cheerleaders that came out to uh help cheer the teams on for me. I really appreciated that. On the twenty-fifth of this month, uh I along with the city clerk Dana Williams Hunter and councilwoman Katrina Manning, we were invited to speak at a women's conference on the twenty-fifth that morning. Uh, lastly, I'd like to thank those of you who took the time to come out and those of you who take the time to watch the city council meetings at home. I wanna say thank you to the finance department for their continued support. Uh, also Rebecca in the city manager's office for her assistance. I'd like to commend all city staff and H P D who have all been so welcoming and supportive in my first ninety days. Thank you.
Boom. That was a good report. Kudos, Marie.
Ninety days. Let's give it up for her. We got a cake waiting outside now. No, I'm just kidding. I shouldn't say that if we don't have one, because now I'm hungry. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, sir. Let us know, what do you have, report from your office?
Yeah, City Clerk, uh William Hunter is at training, T T C, excuse me, all week. Um, and the the last uh food food pro- produce giveaway was canceled due to the rain, the weather. But I believe the next one is scheduled for March twenty-fifth. I know sometimes we receive calls or inquiries regarding that. So if I'm not mistaken, the next produce will be scheduled for the twenty-fifth. Um, other than that, not much else to report from the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Katrina Manning?
I guess I have to say I've been here ninety days too. Um, wow.
What's going on with you guys? Come on, let's give her a big round of applause. You guys are sleepy over there.
I like, I too um join um the city manager and David Patterson and uh Marie at the Holly Park Little League uh opening day. It was so much fun being out there um with all the kids. Um, it's just a fun time. I tell you, I miss having my daughter being that young because then, you know, they don't hop back and they listen. Um, but yeah, it's so fun seeing the their um eyes be so excited and you know, I had an opportunity to talk to the um all-stars and just, you know, I think about the NBA all-stars and so having the Little League all-stars is so awesome. Also, um I'd like to say thank you to Pastor Greg. Um, I went to the breakfast and um the he and and the rest of the pastors uh pray for us, our ci- our city council and our city. And it was so amazing to have them um pray over us and to pray that we do good things and just to protect us. And so I just wanna say thank you. And we all got bibles um specific to issues that you have every single day. So that was so wonderful. I carried that in my um in my car. So thank you for that. And we had breakfast and uh I took breakfast with me. So thank you for that. Also, um I'd like to say I had an opportunity to um go to Cabrillo Elementary School, I believe, for career day. Um, and we read to the kids. Um, uh P D was there as well. And so it was nice to read to the kids. They were so, so excited. Um, they love us. They really love us. So uh kids say the darndest things. But um we had a great time. And so um I encourage my other uh city council people, if you have a chance. They are so welcoming and and wanting us to go over there and read to them. Um, also, more importantly, March twenty-fifth, please RSVP to come to the Women's Celebration Month at the Memorial Center, March twenty-fifth at eleven thirty A M. Um, we're gonna have an amazing time there and we're gonna also talk about, you know, our plan to um have Mother's Day, which is going to be May the sixth at eleven A M. at the Memorial Center in the Solares Rooms. So again, please remember those dates. Uh, councilwoman English and I are hosting March twenty-fifth, Women's History Month, and May sixth, uh Mother's Day. Bring your mother. We're going to be giving away, not giving away, but we will have um light refreshments. So you will be able to have some food. And so please bring your friend, your neighbor, your mother. We wanna um celebrate each other. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you. Was that it?
Yes, sir.
Because you're looking at your page. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Councilmember David Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Trying to speed through it. So I wanna, of course, thank uh the community for coming out and participating in this process, especially on this rainy day. Um, your energy gives us energy. We appreciate your feedback whether no matter, you know, if it's things that you think we wanna hear or don't wanna hear, we we really wanna hear, wanna hear the perspectives and they come from from the community. And I wanna thank city staff for your hard work. We've had a lot of events, a lot of grand openings over the last number of months, and there's always a ton of staff there. I I know I work for a municipality. I don't go to none of their events. And and they have a lot of events. And so it's a big deal that uh we have uh so much staff participation in in our community events and our grand openings and things like that. And and it's great to see you and appreciate your uh your commitment to the city. And of course, I wanna thank the police department and your hard work. I know the police department is doing, going through recruitment uh campaign and I'm excited to see how that works out. Um, I um want to uh express my support of the Michael Leon Child Safety Education Program. Any way I can support that, let me know. Um, the the I want to comment on the T parking program. Uh, I'm wanna commend the council for um initiating that and championing that and allowing that to happen in our city. I know our community appreciates that. I wanna thank the staff for your commitment to doing that. I know it's something that all of us as residents have dealt with, the challenges with our parking. I remember uh the place I lived at before I I do now. I um parking was really, really bad on that street. I used to have to park two blocks away, sometimes park in a uh shopping center parking lot, right, which probably, you know, wasn't supposed to do uh to find some parking. Um, and there was a lot of people saving spaces and you know, taking one car to take up two spaces and very, very frustrating at the time. I remember I I used to pick up a lot of parking tickets in the city of Hawthorne because of the challenge of parking. I think I averaged a parking ticket a month for two and a half years um because of the challenges of parking. And uh and I was the treasurer too. I got no love, right?
Um, you paid him, right? You paid him all right.
I paid him.
Okay, okay, you're good. Okay, man. You're current on that.
I I am.
I was checking, man.
I don't think I have that car anymore, so you know, no.
I'm just kidding, man. I'm just kidding.
Um, so I definitely appreciate the council and the staff for supporting that program. I know the community appreciates that. Um, look forward to Bradford's Taxes and Tacos. Um, I I have a tax business myself. It's something that that I think that um more people should take advantage of some professional uh consulting. Uh, a lot of people choose to kinda go out on their own and I think they have a better experience if they have a professional working with them. It's great that there is a free service like that for those that um, you know, meet that income threshold. We had a a grand opening of Jim Thor- Thor Park. I just wanna congratulate staff again on that. It's just gorgeous. Um, there's been uh uh all of our parks are going through um, you know, redevelopment or uplifting or facelifting or or fixing or renewing. And uh you guys are doing just a great job. I just happy to to be able to witness it. Um, you know, we all appreciate it. Uh, I wanna thank uh Madam Treasurer for your great report. Uh, definitely makes me excited, right? I I um, you know, work as a deputy treasurer in another city and and uh, you know, used to be the treasurer here. So this type of stuff interests me. Um, ran into uh our treasurer at that investment conference in Vegas. Um, and it is a lot of information. There's a lot of, as she was saying, there are some people who represent um state, states, some counties, some uh, you know, just really large municipalities, some people managing five billion dollars that are there. And then there are some people are managing, you know, just a a few million dollars, right, like us. And so some of that information is quite high levels. And 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 um it's a lot of good information. It was really there where I learned about um the ladder strategy that we implemented, you know, some time ago with our investment policy and and allows, you know, monies to come due every quarter that can be reinvested long term and take advantage of the new interest interest rates. And as we know, we're in a inverted yield curve right now. So our short-term interest rates are higher than our long-term interest rates. Um, and so taking advantage of new um CDs and bonds right now, you know, it's 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 pretty lucrative. I did attend the Holly Pa- Harley Holly Park Little League Grand Opening, and that was just so much fun to attend. I think sports really changes lives and I was I was I appreciate the opportunity to participate in that. And um, that's it? Oh, no, 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 I'm so sorry. There was one important thing. National Welcome Home Veterans Day, uh I was that I was proposed by um by Kyle Earlman. I would like to, I don't know what we can do if we can officially recognize that day. And even at the next council meeting, recognize some representatives um of our uh Vietnam veteran community. Um, and maybe work with the Veterans Commission to identify maybe who to who to recognize, but maybe um some sort of proclamation or acknowledgement, but at the very least, if we can um officially as a city recognize that day.
Thank you. All right, awesome. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh thank you, community and and the staff for coming to our meeting tonight. Um, again, I wanna commend, you know, our city manager Vaughn, the chief, the captain Lane, and the Dr. Mark Carrion from the Hawthorne Code of Fit for the great idea uh to create the the Leon, you know, safety um and education program. Because I think it's gonna probably save a lot of lives in our streets. So thank you again for that. Um, yes, definitely, uh I wanna say that uh unfortunately, I missed the Jim Thor reopen yesterday. I was looking forward to do it, but I've been under the weather since Saturday. Uh, but yes, the park looks fantastic, beautiful, because I see it almost every day, because you know, my preschool is right at the Jim Thor Park at the castle. So I saw all the uh progress that was made, you know, from the start to finish. So outstanding job. So thank you Parks and Recs Department, Vaughn, Public Works, Engineering, all of those who participate to renovate all our parks. So and and I know the next one will be the Sally Davis Park coming soon. So thank you very much for all the because I know this is all grand money that we have to apply to bring to our city to renovate our parks. So thank you for that. That's just tremendous. Um, I wanna commend also Vaughn and the staff, you know, for putting this calendar together for the all the events that we're going to have. So that's why I was looking at this calendar. I say, wow, they're gonna be very busy all Saturdays. So uh but I do support all the ideas from uh my councilwoman Katrina Manning because, yes, women's health is important and it has been neglected for many, many years, especially nowadays with the women's rights uh being in the spotlight, you know, more uh women's been denied their rights, you know, especially to some uh, you know, the abortions and some other issues that's coming down to pipe. So uh, yes, we have to keep women's upfront because they are mothers, right? So we have to protect them. So I support all of that. Uh, also, you know, I I I attend, um, I was late for the Little League uh because the mayor and I attending the uh our assemblywoman Tina McCanney uh disaster preparedness day that was the same day on Saturday. So we were at the Memorial Center for that. And then when I I went to the Little League, but all the event was almost towards the end of it. But uh but I did invest, you know, I bought some um some of the jerseys that was there, so I did bought some of them. Um, so that was great, great things happening. Again, you know, like uh Ms. Katrina Manning said, you know, the uh Hawthorne Land and Minister Association breakfast was good at the police department. Uh, and we wanna think things the chief and the public relation, because I think they're the one who provided breakfast. But the the Land and Minister Association, like, yes, they 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 pray for us almost every meeting. Uh, and it was a lot of uh information and shared resources over there. Again, I wanna commend our police department because uh I told them the other day, I was listening to the Specter News, Channel One, about six o'clock in the morning, and they mentioned about Hawthorne Police Department and the Power Girls that was at the Kings game, the hockey game. And one of the girls spoke so eloquent about the Hawthorne P D giving them opportunity to play hockey and the and to go to the games and and uh have conversation with women that have been successful in the sport. So it was it was a command to the our police department that knows how to do community policing and engage the kids. And believe me, more more kids they engage, you know, it will be more connection, uplifting of positive change in our community and the police department. So that that's a great thing happening. Uh, I did attend the um Air Force Base Alliance Coalition. That also was a lot of information giving about the all the veterans and and thing that's coming up at the Air Force Base. Uh, so it was very good meeting the Clean Power Alliance, you know, the sanitation district. So all good things coming up out of out of them. And definitely, I wanna commend uh Senator Steve Bradford and and Jasmine for coming in because there is a new law every year, you know, they change the tax laws, right? So so especially this year because of all those checks that people get from from the, from, from the COVID, so make sure, you know, they going to be, some of them are going to be not reporting, some of them are going to be reporting. So make sure you, you go there for free tax day, because that's, is amazing to do, have a professional helping you with your taxes. So April 1st, again, at the Gardena 1670 West 167th Street. So that's pretty good. Let me see. Again, yeah, congratulations, Mr. Marie Ponderesca, comeback. Your report was very thorough and fantastic, because, you know, for these past 90 days, you guys have been out there, you know, doing what you're supposed to be doing. And, and it's an honor to have all of you, all, we got one, two, three, four, four women sitting on this council. So fantastic. So it's not like the LA County Board of Supervisors, we have five women, right? We love running the county. So, and since we celebrate the Women of the Month, so even I was thinking about, I said, we should have recognized somebody, you know. For example, you know, the, the commander at the Air Force Base is a woman, right? So it's like a coronel Walsh. So I said, huh, maybe we should give her proclamation or something, okay? So she's a woman.
Not to burst your bubble.
Okay.
We're going to be recognizing between five and six women on Mother's Day.
Okay. So, so put coronel Walsh on, on your, because she's the commander at the Air Force Base. You know, imagine a woman commanding the Air Force Base. I don't believe it. So.
Imagine that.
Uh-huh. That's fantastic. Yeah. Oh, and also, you know, the police department was at the coannas meeting. They were, I forgot the two offices. Okay, Vaughn, help me.
Sergeant Kenny Craig, Sergeant Sean Kim.
Yeah. So they did an outstanding job, you know, talking about what the Hawthorne PD has been doing for the community. So the coannas club was very impressed. And sorry, now my mind is out of the place because of all this sinus headache and sudafet is keeping me, you know, drowning and dizzy, but I'll survive. So, please, Mayor, thank you and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. And a quick go back by Councilman Manny, we just caught it just in time.
I'm sorry. So I, I forgot to mention, when we were at the prayer breakfast, our city manager deferred to Kimberly Mack to talk about our housing program. And she did such an awesome job providing information. And I was just completely blown away at the work that they've been doing to make sure that our homeless are housed. And that's a very important issue to me. And it's been raining like crazy. And so she talked about, I think, 12, we were able to take care of 12 people, putting them in, in housing. So I just wanted to say, you did an amazing job and I appreciate the thoroughness and the detailed information you gave at the prayer breakfast, so that everybody can really understand the work that the city of Hawthorne is doing. Because it's important that everybody know that we are working hard collectively to make sure that our, we don't have any homeless people out there. And especially during this time where the weather is really, really horrible. So, and then the other thing is, I had another event and I didn't know whether this is considered a city event, but the bicycle ride with the police department, is that considered? No? Okay, thanks. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem English?
Councilmember Patterson, I hope you feel better. Montero, I'm sorry. Patterson too, he's always got that mask on. No, just kidding. Just joking. Truly, I just want to, let's see, go over a couple of things. Definitely appreciate the T parking presentation that took place. I want to definitely implement the PSAs that we need to make, using council members, using the mayor to just encourage folks to stay in their lane, which is their T alley parking. That would be very helpful and I think greatly appreciated by all. I know that we use the city website to implement the gas company's latest press release and some of the information on there with regards to grants and things that are available, incentives that's going to be going back to customers. A lot of folks have seen bills be excessive to up to $600. I look forward to the April 1st event here at our city park, Memorial Park. Is it considered Memorial Park? Memorial Park, from 10 to 2. We, a few of these that we've already talked about, I hate to be redundant, are tacos and taxes. Yeah, that's, that's cute. On Saturday at 2. That's great from, from Senator Bradford. I like his, his character there. Always helpful. There was some other things that I wanted to make mention. Thank you to our police department and also the California Office of Traffic Safety with regards to implementing the dedication to the Leon family and his son's recent passing. So thank you for that and working diligently and more importantly, expediting that. I attended LA County's California City at the downtown over near, I forgot what it was. It's not the Disney Hall, but it's the other building.
Arti Perform?
What is it? Yes. Well, the one across, yeah, next to that. Yeah. So we went, I went there and I attended LA County California Cities for a briefing. And there are over 2,500 bills that are being introduced and coming for a vote. I wouldn't say all 2,500, but just to keep, you know, an idea of how many bills are coming through Sacramento and eventually are going to be put on the ballot for voters in 2024. And let me tell you, some of these bills are not bills that, that I would take lightly, you know, likely. Really research those bills and understand exactly what, what they mean and how possibly they could affect the residents of Hawthorne and more importantly, our city government. So I'd like, and I know I've been working with the city attorney for him to review those and to give us some ideas. So we're going to be implementing in the agenda, some items to take a look at that, a few of those bills. And they're going to be coming before the council so that you could understand where they came from. They came from LA County, California Cities, okay? And since I'm the delegate, this, this is just general information for you all to consider that I'll be bringing to you. Let's see. I, I also attended the grand opening at Jim Thorpe Park yesterday. That was fun, along with councilmember Patterson. And if you haven't seen the pictures, those are great pictures. Councilmember Patterson and myself having fun over at Jim Thorpe Park. And thank you to all of those that attended in Channel 22 for capturing all that. That was great, along with all the staff. Those are great pictures. I also was invited to attend the lion speaker contest in the city of Monterey Park. So they invited me to be a judge. So I'll be over in Monterey Park on April 6th, doing the lion speaker club. And let me tell you, they're, wow, they're on it. I was looking at all the rules and everything. I can't believe it. It's like, wow. I look forward to the speakers. The speakers' topic has to do with social injustices, whether it be, you know, good or bad, you know, whether, you know, those, those things that a lot of our teens are looking at from internet to, you know, Facebook to Instagram, all of that, whether or not it's good or bad. And that's the topic of the speech that they need to give. And so I look forward to hearing that, especially from our youth. Yeah. Our women's event coming up on the 25th. I hope all of you can attend. Please RSVP. Bring your mothers, bring your wives, your sisters, your aunties. Please participate over at the Memorial Center on the 25th at 11:30 a.m. Look forward to that. Guest speaker and panel discussion, more importantly, just the networking. Talked about the Speed Humps, Public Works, thank you again for, for what you do. And can I just quickly also make mention and give my condolences to Sintana Valley Union School District? I don't know if any of you have heard, but there was a youth that died. And that was a few days ago. And it's very sad when we have a student that passes away, especially while attending class at, you know, at school. And so again, too young. But I don't have a whole lot of details, although I know some of the details. I'm not going to say. Eventually, I think that will come out, but I just want our students to just be, you know, vigilant and they all saw what happened. And I hope that they get the, the counseling and the assistance that they need to overcome what they witnessed. Marie, thank you so much, city treasurer, for your report. That was great. Appreciate that. That was actually a long time coming. Yeah, that was a long time coming. I know Councilman Patterson, when he sat there, he was very, you know, on, on it and provided a lot of our, 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 our money to increase because of his knowledge and how he was able to move things around that gave us some extra dollars. So thank you for following and, and following in that lead. And I know Dana's at our training in Riverside, so she'll come back with lots of information there. And thank you all for all of your participation here at city council tonight. It's raining, drive safely. I think that should do it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a flyer and it's also on the city website, I believe.
Alright, we ready?
Real quick, don't forget our Palat Shelter Grand Opening. The Palat Shelter Grand Opening, I believe, is on the 14th or 11th?
April 11th, 9:30.
11th, at 9:30. Palat Shelter Grand Opening.
Alright, thank, thank you guys. So greetings to everybody out there. We're almost finished. We're going to have a closed session after this. That should not take long. But if there's people in the audience here, you guys could probably just start heading out as soon as we go back in the back, because we're just, nothing exciting is going to happen once we come back out. So on March 4th, I co-hosted an emergency preparedness fair with Assemblymember Tina McKinner in the Memorial Center. And it was well-attended and it's a regional emergency preparedness fair. My colleague, Councilmember Montero, attended and was there to show support. And it was a great event where we had city CERT programs from the locality. We had the LA County Fire Department, we had some of the school districts touting some of their materials in order for, to ensure student safety. We had Home Depot that was there, offering some emergency preparedness supplies and other emergency preparedness organizations. So it was a regional fair. And it wasn't just a Hawthorne-based fair, it was a regional fair. And we had people from all over the region coming there. So I want to thank Assemblymember Tina McKinner for choosing Hawthorne to be the location for this fair. As a result of this, Mr. City Manager, I did talk to members of our CERT program here in the city of Hawthorne. And we also, I also talked to the Emergence Operations Center. The person who's engineering that and putting it together, the logistics on that and directive-wise. And obviously with the discussion and support of my council colleagues, maybe the next meeting. I want to see if you could take a look, Mr. City Manager, the possibility of using ARPA funds to be able to help subsidize some of CERT's operations, the Community Emergency Response Team, please. And to be able to fund the equipment and the setup of our Emergency Operations Center, which we have down here in the basement. Down here in the basement. Have you been down there? Yeah, it's, it's an actual, I mean, this looks like DEFCON 5 type of setting right there, but without any computers, without any monitors, radios or anything. So I think if we could reach out to the members, Mr. Jim Matthews and to whoever's the gentleman that he's working with for the Emergency Operations Center to kind of, well, okay, yeah, he's a great guy and he's taken the time to volunteer to do this. Oh, exactly. Kudos to the Home Depot Center for giving 50 emergency preparedness backpacks filled to the brim with the necessary, necessary equipment for.
Did you bring any for us?
Oh, yeah. Well, I didn't even get one. I didn't get one. I don't know what you're talking about. I don't get one. I'm pretty sure we could get them to help out. I'll make sure to, to have that taken care of for the next time. Mr. City Manager, is that good? And then we'll discuss it as a group and see how you guys feel about it. How about that?
I'm for it, 100%.
We'll see what, yeah. And they're not even asking for crazy amounts, man. One guy say, oh, can you help us out with maybe $5,000 for this? And then like, I mean, in the scheme of things, the types of things we're allowing, it's like, man, that's like a modest amount that they're asking for. So if you could connect. So I guess I'm thinking modest, but can we use ARPA funds for hers? Alright, so there, so. Alright. Okay, come on, guys. ARPA funds, we're talking ARPA funds. Come on. You guys are making me look like I'm not over here supporting my council colleagues. Alright. Also, I'll be attending a dinner with Supervisor Holly Mitchell and the new Los Angeles Mayor Karen Bass.
Nice.
Very soon. And we're going to be discussing regional issues, so I'll just make sure I send my regards on my council member colleagues behalf and, on behalf of the city. I, I think they already, they already closed out the RSVPs. Closed out the RSVPs. So, okay. Oh, really? I'm saying, okay. So I'll make sure I let them know that you guys said hi. Okay. My friends over there. Okay, so. Then be attending a Policy Institute on Economic Mobility for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials in New York. On a scholarship, so we're not using any city funds. So I was able to obtain a scholarship from the organization in order to attend pretty soon in April, so. The 27th, oh, wow, there she goes. And are you going with that one too? Really? So I'm not going to have a good time anymore? You're just ruining my experience. No, just kidding. We've been to conferences and we've had great times over there. We were able to connect, bond and connect with so many people. So we've been able to network together. So it's worked out. Then, okay, I mean, look, this is just kind of my, my ideas, something that just came to mind and we're the city of Hawthorne and all corners of the city of Hawthorne are important. But I think there's been areas of, members of certain homeowners associations and groups that have come to the city and we never see them participate in any events. We never see them come and go to any of the events at the Memorial Center reach out to us or participate when we invite them and they, you know, nonexistent. But whenever they have enough concern, they're over here complaining and saying that we don't care about them and that Hawthorne's, they say all these bad things about Hawthorne. Like how, you know, we're not a good city, that they don't have our support, that Hawthorne is turning into this and everything. Well, you have a choice in where you live. If you don't like what you see, don't live in the city of Hawthorne. Because we have a lot of wonderful people that support the city of Hawthorne. Let's see more of you so that you can see what we're doing. And we as a city of Hawthorne, we promote ourselves as much as we can as individuals, okay? But if people aren't communicating with us and not giving us a chance to respond or to do things with them or to get to know what we're doing by coming to these events, we got the Hagardys, Kyle Ullerman and the pastor and multiple people, the Balboas and Nibels, who used to come here from the different segments of the community that are been observant and passing on the information. So what I don't like is that people badmouth the city of Hawthorne at all, okay? Because we're an awesome city. You know, we have great people, we're very diverse, we have a wide economic expansive incomes. So I don't like it when people badmouth the city, okay? I take offense to that. We're a beautiful city. I've lived here all my life. I give a darn. And I know everybody here in this, watching and hearing me right now also. So if, if you like, if you, if you want to be called Magic Man, you don't like living in Hawthorne and you're saying you're Manhattan Beach adjacent, just go move to Manhattan Beach if that's what you want. Okay? So that's all I got to say. Hawthorne's a beautiful place. Be proud of where you're at. There's a lot of great things here. Alright. What did I say? It just makes me mad. Oh, I teach, I teach, in the daytime I teach from about 7:30 to 2:30. In the jails, I teach math and science. So we don't have substitutes, so it's difficult for me to attend some of these events. So hey, I'm a working class member of the community myself. these events. So, hey, I'm a working-class member of the community myself, have his day job, so I know City Manager and my colleagues always keep me up to date as to how things go. And I know some of my other councilmember colleagues are not always able to take the time off, so I don't think that the residents out there should not think that that's not a measure of support.
I made that mention yesterday.
So that...
At the grand opening.
We do. A lot of those things are happening because we all vote on the same things here.
And we have full-time jobs.
That's important to mention, right? Is there any member, member of the public that would like to address item 20? Mr. City Clerk, read item number 20.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is closed session, item number 20. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9D1. Name of case: City of Hawthorne et al. v. Cohen et al., Sacramento Superior Court, case
Does anybody want to speak on item 20? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. We will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. It's gonna be quick, and I don't think we should take that long. We will recess at 8:31. The city council meeting is called back to order at 8:59.